Coxwell, can you hear and see us?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect, we'll get started in just a little bit.
Is she on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great Susan, we're gonna get started as soon as, everybody sits down.
Still got two minutes. Minutes. He's lost the word.
Oh.
Okay. Okay. We're waiting on time too.
Five fifty-nine, alright. You know, he gets paid by the hour, he needs to, uh, be on time.
He keeps seeming to wanna up his rate, I have not been calling him like I used to.
I don't call him because I heard cha-ching in the back, he sets the, uh, time clock. He puts the time clock thing in, he goes, just a second, hold on for a second, he clicks it in there and...
Shouldn't we get credit when he calls us?
There he is. You can charge him. I don't know, you know, it's a good question.
Did he say, uh, am I the highest one to take?
That's a good question. It wasn't pretty.
Reporting in progress.
Okay. Let's go ahead and get started, uh, invocation.
Let's pray. Uh, Father, we pause again at our, the beginning of our time together, just to take a breath and be grateful that we're so, uh, thankful to be here again in the beginning of twenty twenty-six. Uh, to serve the people of Mariestor, we just ask that you would bless the citizens, staff, and the elected officials of the city and that, uh, you would bless them throughout the year. Uh, we're excited for a new year, it brings so many new opportunities, but it also brings challenges, so we just pray, uh, that we, uh, be, uh, reminded that, uh, your presence is with us. Uh, whether we're in the midst of an exciting opportunity or in a challenging situation, and it's that presence that we would ask, uh, that would guide our time together tonight, so. We thank you, we love you, and we just ask that you'd bless this meeting in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Calling the order of the regular meeting of the City of Mariestor City Council twenty, January twenty twenty-six at six P M, let's, uh, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, now I have a request that the City Clerk do a roll call of City Council.
Councilmember Sutton, Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Carter, Councilmember, or Mayor Protonoder.
Here.
You have a call.
Okay, thank you, at this time we have one council member that's absent, Susan Coxwell, she is online. We need a motion to include her in tonight's meeting for voting and everything. And we got a second by Ms. Sutton, first is by Mr. Carter, okay, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, it's unanimous, Susan, you're on board, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, uh, okay, uh, tonight's agenda is, um, I need approval of it, however, I did get a request from the city manager to take out six point two Jacob's Asset Management Plan update and move that to February. So, uh, that's the only change of tonight's agenda, unless you guys don't like that, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So make that motion.
Okay, first, and second, Mr. Lawson, first was, uh, April Sutton, okay, so we got that going. Let's go ahead and start with the, uh, special presentations. Oh, I'm sorry, let's go ahead and vote. Go ahead and vote, Susan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, I apologize for that. And we are unanimous, alright. Six point one, a Citizen of the Year Award twenty twenty-six. Connie, alright, okay, well, we started something new called the Citizen of the Year, and Connie, you got it, congratulations.
Uh, it should be in there, it's the big white box. We did more than a certificate this time.
Fifteen of three, letter C for it.
What, what is it?
The letter C, tenth of, uh...
Eleven.
Eleven.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. But, but thank you for all your contributions. Hey, y'all, take care of her now. Thank you.
Okay.
He's been a big...
Thank you again.
At the library, and she does a lot of community projects and stuff.
Okay, moving on, uh, the consent agenda, another item I need approval on for tonight, uh, do I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, or does somebody wish to change it?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, first, Ms. Sutton.
Second.
Second, Mr. Carter, or Carta, uh, okay, how's that say, room, anyway, it's a TV show, Mr. Carta, um, but any discussion on it? Okay, let's go ahead and vote, Susan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. And we are unanimous on that one. Item eight is citizens who have been requested to be placed on the agenda, we have two tonight. First one's eight point one, Levanta Holmes, you hear?
Does not look like it.
I can tell. Okay, alright, good, well, it ain't good, but, alright, well, I don't know why you go through the trouble and then don't show up. The next one is, uh, eight point two, Shiva Patel, okay, if you would, please go up there, uh, your name, address, social security number, mother's maiden name, you know, the usual, and, uh, start off.
And you can adjust the mic too.
Okay. My name is Shiv Patel, uh, my address is four eight zero East Miracle Strip Parkway, uh, first off, Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight, it's a pleasure speaking with you all. My name is Shiv Patel again, I own and operate a hotel here in Mariestor, as well as others in the Panhandle area. I'm here because the city's water and sewer billing structure for hotels is, seems outdated. It creates real challenges for businesses that want to continue investing here. I've spoken directly with the city manager, he confirmed that my bill is calculated correctly, that the structure is based on the old ordinance that hasn't been reviewed in many years. And that only city council has authority to revisit it, and that's why I'm here today. Under the current structure, my hotel is charged water and sewer fees per room plus usage. This works out to roughly seventy-seven dollars per room, per month, meaning nearly four thousand dollars in fixed charges before a single guest uses water. And total monthly bills, even during the low occupancy months, can range from five thousand to eight thousand dollars. From an operational standpoint, this doesn't reflect reality. My hotel has one water connection and one sewer connection, water comes in through one pipe and wastewater leaves through one pipe. Both are based on actual gallons flowing through the system, not on how many doors the building has. Hotels are seasonal, occupancy fluctuates, demand fluctuates, but this policy charges hotels as if every room is occupied at all times. What also concerns me is transparency. When I received my first bill, the total was simply lumped into water and sewer charges, with no clear explanation of how that total was calculated. There was no line item breakdown showing base charges, per unit charges, or how usage was even allocated. I actually had to go through the city manager directly to understand how the bill was actually being calculated. For business making real investment decisions, that lack of clarity matters a lot. I understand the city's need to recover infrastructure costs, that's reasonable, but when fixed costs are applied in a way that assumes constant maximum use and the methodology, the methodology isn't clearly shown on the bill, becomes a serious deterrent. And here's why this matters beyond just my property. If I were considering building another hotel here in Mariestor, this utility structure alone, both the cost and the lack of transparency, will give me serious pause. When I compare Mariestor to neighboring cities like Fort Walton Beach, or even Pensacola, where water and sewer billing is tied primarily to the meter size and actual usage, Mariestor simply isn't competitive. Hotels bring jobs, tourism, and local spending. I want to keep investing here, I want the city to grow just as much as you do, but a ser- serious deterrent like this doesn't help make that possible. I'm not asking for a refund, I'm not asking for special treatment, I'm asking city council to direct their staff to review the current hotel water and sewer ordinance, evaluate its economic impact, improve transparency, and compare it to neighboring municipalities, and bring back reasonable alternatives for council consideration. And thank you for your time, I appreciate it, if, uh, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Well said. Good, good speech.
What do you guys feel about that?
I agree.
I mean, I agree that the ordinances need to be updated.
At least looked at, yeah, I mean, this is, that's, uh, it's different, yeah. Does everybody kinda think we need a review of that ordinance? Okay, I'm sorry, Jared, you wanna go, talk?
Um, if council would like us to, to look and provide some sort of comparison, we're happy to do that, I would say that would be up to the city council if you'd like us to review the rate structure.
Yeah.
I think it should be, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree, it can't hurt to look at it.
Susan, how do you sound, everybody else is in agreement?
Uh, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so be it. Do we need to vote on it? No, we're just directing you to review it.
So, yeah, so I think at this point, I'll go ahead and look at some other examples, um, the one thing I do wanna to bring to your attention though is that if there was a, a serious interest in making a change, we would probably want to have a rate study done for this. Considering the number of, of ERUs and the impact in the future, if we were to have another, uh, similar development.
So I think for the first step, let's look at the other cities and how that rate structure goes, and then, depending on how everybody on the council feels, maybe then we also look at Jacob, see what get them involved and start looking further if we need to.
What's a fair amount of time you need to work this issue, so we put, kinda pin a date on the calendar.
So if the question is just how, uh, the city charges for ERUs equivalent residential units, um, I would say that would be something we could probably bring back to you at the March meeting.
How do we compare?
Correct.
Their cities, that, that's, I think that's an important thing, if we, we should be doing similar to Fort Walton Beach and other cities and not just have our own little niche.
Correct, so we can bring something back to you, I would say, in March.
Okay.
Um, but, but again, I think if, if the council got to the point of actually wanting to make a change, I would certainly suggest that we have a rate study completed.
Is this like requiring a meter for each room? Does it have a... No. No, it doesn't.
So the short, the short version of it is that, yes, you do have some cities that charge based on the meter size. Uh, you have others that will, that will charge based on the type of use, because there are certain uses that consume more water and more demand than others. And so that would be something that you would look at more along the lines of a rate study, um, but for the question of whether or not we compare well to Fort Walton Beach or Pensacola, any other comparables, um, we could bring that back to you in March.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Given the, the time this ordinance was written, and the history between it, and, well, first of all, how much does a rate study cost?
I can't give you that number tonight.
Well, in the essence of expediting the issue because it won't get better, so why not do both? Do the study, well, because most likely it's gonna require a rate study, at the end of the day, why wait, why wait months?
I, I agree with Councilmember Carter, it's, I mean, I'd like to see both, but also, I don't know that comparing the studies to, like, Pensacola and Fort Walton is really accurate because they're also much larger cities, so I'd also like to see smaller cities that are more similar in our size compared. But I do think, at, I mean, I do think we're going to eventually need a rate study, so I think we need to go ahead and try and get that done. Because I don't wanna be here next year and then deciding.
Mr. Roder?
Uh, yeah, a little background, uh, unfortunately I've been here a long time, but the mall is a perfect example that the mall unfortunately only had one meter, even though all the different companies were there and stuff like that. Uh, the rate study, my concern, again, we already have a deficit we're in, so I really, I would like to know how much that, and again, far as I'm concerned, you can tell us. You know, I don't really wanna spend a hundred thousand dollars on a rate study on something like this.
You can't afford it.
I know, that's all I'm saying, we're in a deficit, so I, before we... I know, that's all I'm saying, we're in a deficit, so I, before we plunge into this, I would like to see as best guess as we, because those things change, but I'd like to make sure we can afford this. Not that we don't need to do it, but we, again, we can't write red checks, so we gotta be careful.
Can I ask this real quick, before we continue? Can everyone just pull their mics closer?
Sure.
I'm, okay. Ms. Otter? Did you wanna talk about the rate change too, city clerk, or just the mics?
So, Mayor and Council, if it would help, I'm happy to bring back to you at that meeting in March, not only whether or not we compare well to our neighbors or, like, municipalities, utilities, but also the cost of the rate studies that we can move forward.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. You agree with that, Susan? Ms. Coxwell?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, moving on. Item number nine is, uh, public comment, non-agenda items. Does anybody wish to, uh, speak about a non-agenda item tonight? Nothing? Okay, I'm just throwing it out there. Alright. Item number ten is unfinished business. Ten point one is consideration, Mary Esther Boulevard landscaping project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sean Lindsay, Director of Public Works. And online we have Charlie Johnson, the, uh, landscape architect for this project. Just give you a brief history of what we've done so far. On October sixth, uh, staff presented the final plans for Mary Esther Boulevard median beautification project. The city council requested seventy-five hundred to add project, uh, renderings to the Kimmely Horn scope of work. At number of third meeting, uh, council approved moving forward with the renderings, which was, uh, intended to confirm design alignments with council's expectations to support public engagement. After council requested samples before approving the expense, and we received renderings, uh, were provided, uh, during the process, staff discovered that they were, uh, the renderings, uh, had a different layout than, than what's out there because of the construction that took place. Just an error. That was, uh, remedied, and now we have the finished renderings. Uh, they're up here now, and, and we have Charlie Johnson on the, uh, here on the call to answer any questions about the design or the renderings. So, um, just, just remind you, the construction is fully funded by FDOT. Uh, the city is responsible for engineering costs, already approved and ongoing maintenance after the first year of establishment. And staff recommends a motion to approve the landscape design for Mary Esther Boulevard median beautification project, and authorize staff proceed to bid. There is a step between that. After you approve it, it does have to go back to FDOT one last time, particularly if there's any changes, uh, for them to look at or, again, to make sure they approve before we go to bid, but Charlie can give you more details.
Are the plants in the design the ones that will be planted?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we, we get that picture, we paid seventy-five hundred?
Yes, we can, we can look through that now. It shows it from different angles.
Oh, wow.
So my concern is the tall, like, grass, because low cars can, that's a visual-
What's it gonna look like?
Charlie can talk more to that, to the exact plants and, and the sight distance issues, because that was a complication of the project that had to be meet the FDOT standards.
So you wanna talk to it?
Yes, I'm glad to. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And I'm, I'm sorry for the, the lighting in my house. I'm, I'm home with some sick children. So, uh, we did have to respect the clear sight distances throughout the roadway, um, based on FDOT standards and, and, you know, just general roadway safety, and so the plant selections we made, respect those areas in, in a lot of ways. That's where the trees ended up being located, as well as certain heights of plants that we used. And, uh, so we've ensured that we're meeting the clear sight distances, and this median is just one example of what was selected. And, you know, the real driver for plant selection was, you know, number one, you gotta have something that can survive in this tough urban environment with vehicles driving past it all the time, and, and the heat island effect that happens from asphalt surrounding it. But two, you know, we worked with Sean to understand, uh, what type of maintenance requirements there will be on these plants. And as well, you want something, of course, that's attractive, and so, uh, they'll have seasonal blooming, through the use of these plants, and, and these are plants that are tried and true, uh, in these medians, and so, at the tips, you'll notice, of these islands, we've got, um, a minimum of one hundred feet from the edge of the median back to where the first tree is, from a, a safety standpoint. Uh, as well, uh, we located limited sod areas so that if somebody had to get out there, or when they do have to get out there and maintain these with a lawnmower, they're not mowing right on the edge of a, a thin sod strip with cars passing by, it's just large areas at the, the tips of the islands. Uh, that said, I can go into the species if desired and, and explain which ones are in there, if anybody wants to hear that. Would, would anybody want to know what plants are out there?
Do you? The species?
I, I couldn't hear too well.
Yeah, no, the answer's no, we, we don't, uh, wanna hear about the species.
Okay.
You wanna hear about the species?
We don't have any, the oaks that are in there, they're not as big as the oaks that are on ninety-eight, are they?
They are not, uh, well, let me clarify that. They are a form of live oak. They're high-rise live oaks, and they've got more of a columnar growth pattern, but overall, they're gonna give you, you know, better shade than some other trees may. Throughout the corridor, we, we don't have just live oaks. We've also got Schumard Oaks and, and another mixture of canopy trees.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have a printout of what the plants are, uh, that are gonna be put there? You don't have to talk about it, but do we, do we have anything, like a hard copy? We have a resident that was interested. John?
Yeah, and the agenda packet's a full set of plans.
Okay. It's in the agenda packet, and that's online, so you, you got it. Okay? Alright, um, anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the landscape design for the Mary Esther Boulevard median beautification project, and authorize staff to perf- proceed to bid?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, first, Mr. Otter?
Second.
Second, Mr. Carter. Any more discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Susan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we're unanimous on that one. Moving on to new business, eleven point oh, eleven point one is consideration award of RFB two zero two five, Azelia Park.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Sean Lindsay, Director of Public Works. So, council directed us to, uh, design and, and, uh, CPH did the engineering, uh, for bonded rubber trail in Azelia. They were solicited, however no bid was received, for the alternative gravel trail. The estimate cost for the gravel trail is between twenty-five and fifty thousand, with further pricing determined if council selects this option. Opting for a gravel trail would allow relocation, reallocation of funds towards additional amenities such as plants, signage and fencing, however the bonded trail offers advantages including reduced maintenance and ADA compliance. Uh, the attached landscape plan provides detailed information on the recommended plantings and fencing. The plan is comprehensive, incorporating a privacy hedge composed of native plants and designed areas featuring native species groupings. The proposed fencing serves as a temporary measure to maintain privacy at the rear of the park while the natural hedge mature, matures. The plan was designed for phased implementation based on available funding. Additionally, members of the Florida Plant Native Plant Society have expressed interest in the project and have already contributed plants to enhance the park's landscape. I'd also like to mention, they also come and help us with invasive species removal, which is also important. The city received two bids. One was from Ranger Rubber LLC for a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fourteen, and Acre Construction Corporation for a hundred and forty-four thousand, five ninety-eight. CPH recommends awarding the contractor Ranger Rubber. Staff will coordinate with CPH on samples, forms, and required performance bond. The proposed fence is a temporary six-foot privacy fence, shielding a small dog park area, sorry, shielding a small park area from neighboring dogs until hedge plants may, are mature. Landscape can be phased over time as resources permit. A total of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine, seventy-one is available from the original three hundred thousand dollar budget for remaining improvements in Azelia Park. The bid amount of a le- one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fourteen, uh, if the bonded trail is approved, would leave eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-one cents for additional plant signage and fencing to complete the project. Staff recommends motion to award the RFB to twenty-five, uh, twenty twenty-five dash two to Ranger Rubber LLC in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fourteen for the bonded trail, rubber trail at Azelia Park, contingent upon satisfactory review of color and material samples.
Okay, discussion?
Um, I have two questions. One, which version will get this park opened sooner?
Uh, whi- which of the two bids, or the alternative versus the two bids?
Alternative versus the rubber mulch.
The alternative would be much sooner.
And the second question is, how much of this park are we gonna have to tear up when we go in to do the retrofit of the water and sewer lines out there, like we did in Springdale?
So I reviewed the plans for the, uh, the Springdale, and right now they're proposing just use Town Lane as their storage area.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking about what lines are gonna be running through that park where we're gonna have to dig up.
Oh, okay, I, so, uh, there, there, uh, there's an existing sewer pipe that runs to the park that they're gonna seal the inside. So it'd only be going from manhole to manhole, so they won't actually be in the park except right there at the front. And the water line's being moved from the other side of the road to the side of the parks on. So that, that front area will be, will be, uh, tore up and a water line put in.
You have another question? Anybody else? Ms. Coxwell, you got any questions about the-
Nope, nope, I'm good.
Okay, well, in that case, do I have a motion to award? Jared, you wanna talk at all? City manager, you wish to say?
No, sir, Sean covered it well.
I didn't wanna leave you out. Do I have a motion to award RFB twenty twenty-five dash zero two to Ranger Rubber LLC in the amount of a hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars for the bonded rubber trail at Azelia Park, contingent upon satisfactory review of color and material samples?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Lawson's number one?
I'll second.
And Mr. Otter's number two? Yes, go ahead and vote. Ms. Ca- uh, Susan, what do you, how do you vote?
Uh, yes, please.
Yes, thank you. And we got a, uh, four one vote, so we are good to go. Alright, eleven point two is a discussion of West Highway ninety-eight property. Sutton, you were gonna talk to that, right?
Yes.
I believe. Okay, go ahead.
So we do have a parcel that is not really big enough to develop into necessarily a park, and at this point, I do not wanna get back into another park construction. So I would like to hear from council if we can see about getting rid of this piece of land.
So you imagine you want us to talk to it? Different ways of getting rid of it?
Uh, Mayor, that would actually be a question really for the city attorney to address.
Have you researched this at all?
Yeah, I, I have, uh, Mayor and Council. I spoke with Jared, and I did have a, a brief conversation with Councilmember Sutton, I don't know, probably about a month ago, give or take. The issue is that this piece of property, uh, is, from what I understand, listed as a roadway, so it's not a, uh, deeded piece of property to the city. And as such, generally, with those types of properties, you need to aban- you, we can abandon it, right? We can either use it as its intended purpose, which would be on the plat for a road, or we, you know, we can abandon it. So, uh, from a legal and monetary perspective, there's really not much value, other than maybe trying to monetize it to the adjacent property owners. So if you abandon the property, uh, as a roadway, then it, then it usually was called a sheets to the, the adjacent property owner. So you take the road, if it's fifty foot wide, twenty-five feet would go to one adjacent property owner, and the other twenty-five feet would go to the, the, the other side of the road, the other adjacent property owner. That would obviously increase their footprint, you know, they'd have to get a new survey, get an updated deed, things like that, and, you know, you could charge ad valorem. But as far as, uh, being able to sell it to a developer, or anybody else like that, you probably wouldn't be able to get any type of title insurance or anything.
Can we change it from a road to a deeded property and then sell it?
Uh, no, usually what happens whenever you have a plat like that, if you abandon it, like I said, it'd go to the adjacent property owners. In some instances, it could go back to the original developer, if they're still around. I've looked at these in the past in other jurisdictions, and it's just, it's not something that's very marketable at all. I mean, uh, just because of the way it, you know, it was, it was, uh, I guess, uh, word escapes me, but whatever-
I mean, it's fifty-
Dedicated, it was dedicated to the city as a roadway, so the idea is you're gonna use it as a roadway. If you don't wanna use it as a roadway, that's fine, you can abandon it and say, we're not gonna use it, and then it goes back on the tax rolls, as I said, it goes to the adjacent property owners. I- if there is a future use, uh, we've done this with alleyways in other jurisdictions, you know, in Fort Walton Beach, when I represented them. Like I said, it's just not something that we have a deed to, and that was deeded to the city to give it to where you could do, you know, because if somebody's gonna buy it, they're gonna want, you know,
A deed, to build on, yeah.
They're gonna want clear title, they're going to deed, uh, that way they can do some development. And this just doesn't set up that way. Uh, I discussed this with Jared. I haven't gone through the process, because again, you know, we could do a title search, you know, order a title search, but it's probably gonna not produce anything other than the plat and showing that it was dedicated to the city as a roadway. So I didn't wanna put a bunch of time into it, just because it didn't seem as though it would bear any real fruit for the city. So, uh, I'm glad to look a little deeper, uh, and, and I discussed this with, uh, commi- uh, Councilmember Sutton, and, uh, again, with Jared, uh, the other day, well, let, let me say about a week and a half ago. And, um, it was on me, I was gonna do a report, but essentially what I've just told you would be in that report. If you want something in writing, I'll be glad to put that down. I just, uh, you know, mindful of the city's, uh, not wanting to spend costs on things, and I just can't see, uh, paying any dividends, so to speak. You know, now if somebody wanted to come in, uh, and try to take it, you know, if I was there, I probably wouldn't, because again, we don't have a deed, clear title, all those types of things, and trappings that come with, uh, transactions for real estate.
Because it's fifty feet of waterfront property, I mean, it's, it's buildable.
No, I mean, I'm not suggesting-
I'm just saying, if, if, other than it being a road.
Well, and I mean, we could maybe appro- approach the adjacent property owners and see if they're willing to provide some sort of, you know, because again, if we decide to abandon it, thing is, usually on those types of situations, the property owners, or, you know, the adjacent ones are, will come to the city and say, hey, would you be interested in abandoning this, because you're never gonna build a road, are you? No, probably not, but then, uh, and I've had those situations occur where a property owner wants to, you know, enlarge their footprint, their lot size. A- a- and maybe negotiating some, some sort of, you know, expense and costs, you know, that they would pay to the city to get that, you know, to do that. Uh, just not doing it necessarily for free, and again, even then, you're not gonna get probably what Commissioner, or Councilmember Sutton was thinking about, would be like, hey, let's put it on the market-
Yeah.
And see what we have. I mean, anybody who would come in and wanna buy something like this, like I said, we don't even have a deed to, you know, quick claim deed or warranty deed to give to them.
Councilmember Coxwell raised her hand.
Okay, Ms. Cox, Coxwell, go ahead.
Well, I mean, as it is, it's a, it's primitive lot, so there's absolutely, there's no water hookup or anything like that, but, um, it's my knowledge last, I looked into this also, was the two adjacent homeowners are pretty much using it anyway, or were up until a point. So, uh, you know, they were using it for, you know, an, an alleyway kind of between their property to the water, or po- parking their boats and things like that. So, I mean, that's something, they've already been using it.
Well, well, see, and that was kinda my thought, is not even necessarily about selling it, because, but it's something right now that we're still required to maintain technically. And our resources are already spread thin. We're already in a deficit this year. So if we can go ahead and even have the other, you know, adjacent owners take over the property, that would extend their footprint, so that would also extend their property tax value. So we would, I mean, granted, it's minimal, but at this point, every dollar counts, and I, you know, it's, let's get rid of stuff that we're, we absolutely are not going to use.
No, a- and I mean, we can either approach the property owners about that, uh, because I think we'd wanna talk to them about, you know, because again, they would need to, file new deeds, we'd have to get surveys to show what, you know, what's going on, have them pay that, not have the city.
But with them technically still using it right now, ultimately, you know, if one of them falls and breaks a neck, the city is liable.
I, I don't know about that, but-
They're, they're, they're also trespassing on public property.
Well, well, the idea would be, but, no, and I mean, I, I think, uh, Councilmember Sutton's- Well, well, the idea would be, but no, and I mean, I I think uh Councilmember Sutton's comments are well taken. So I mean, we can definitely explore that with the property owners.
Okay, now, real quick, you said they're gonna, if they, we give them the property, they're gonna re-deed it. Why can't we re-deed it and sell it?
And Hayward, pull the mic.
You know what I'm saying? You know, you're you're talking about giving it to the property owners and they're gonna have to put it on their plat, you know, and have to have it surveyed. Why can't we reserve it, survey it and 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 deed it?
Because it was dedicated to the city as a road.
But we're giving it away to somebody that's not gonna use it for a road.
Saying, so imagine like whenever the plat was created, the the developer came in and said, I'm gonna give you all these these lanes, these roadways for for public access, right? And and the city can say, no, we don't want it, right? We don't wanna take that dedication. Uh and we're not gonna accept that. And we're not gonna maintain it. We're not gonna create any roadways. Then the, then they would have to do something with it, right? They'd wanna have access. These property owners, we wouldn't be cutting off access if you abandoned this property. And all they're doing is gonna survey and it's gonna increase their footprint.
Twenty-five feet of each side, whatever thing.
Assuming that's the case. And that's that's by operation of law when we abandon it and go through our process. So I mean, I'm not opposed to 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 looking at that and going through that process if that's what council wants to do. And as uh Councilmember Sutton indicated, that would increase, you know, I don't know how much, but would increase their ad valorem uh taxes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, with bigger piece of property.
Right, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
And then, you know, uh value goes up, you know, city gets a little more a- and ad valorem tax.
How do you feel?
Well, it's it's not about how I feel. I mean, one of one of the things is that, you know, since we're having this discussion, in the adopted vision plan, that was pointed out as a potential water point waterfront access point in the future. So I'm not, at the end of the day, this is a council decision, but just wanted to make sure that that you all were aware of that as well a- as you're deliberating.
And it could be used for that as a road.
Well, yeah, you could clear it. Uh and I'm sure, you know, through proper engineering, you know, set something up to where it could be used as some sort of primitive, you know, or or or, you know, uh access point for citizens and visitors to the city of Mariestra.
Couldn't it be used for like kayaks and paddleboards?
Potentially, yeah. I don't mean, you know, to to Jared's point, I mean, they're not making any more of it, you know, as far as, you know.
Waterfront property.
So, I mean, if you wanna try to uh expand, you know, access points to the sound for citizens and visitors visitors of the city, I mean, that may be something. But again, as uh Councilmember Sutton said, you know, there's a cost to that, right? You know, and we haven't done anything with it for all these years. You know, do we, do we believe there would be? Whether it be this council or some council in the future, is that gonna be something that, you know, a future council is gonna say, man, I wish they would've never got rid of that? Or are they gonna say, hey, you know, we didn't have any plans for it? So again, I I'm with Jared, it's a council's decision. You tell us what you wanna do and we'll we'll try to figure out if if and how we get there.
Question.
Mr. Carter?
If we abandon in place and the neighbors, the two properties, assume that land. So if one, a person wanted to have access to the sound, they'd be trespassing on private property.
Right, it becomes private property.
Can we stipulate that the right away to the sound be still there?
They're not gonna wanna go for that. So you either make a park or give up the land, cause you can't sell it. Or just keep it the way it is. I mean, maintenance on it, where's Sean? I mean, are we spending a lot of money? I mean, it it doesn't look like it's been touched by anybody.
No, sir, we're not.
Okay.
Make sure I understand.
Good.
This is that blue square or rectangle, I should say? Okay, I, there's no, there's no indicator I, in the graphics. I wanted to make sure I understood where where it's at. Okay.
Williams and uh.
Right. But fifty foot is, it's wide, but it's not. It'd be hard to pull down in there with the too many uh
Car, yeah.
Kai- kayaks and and waterboard, you know, so. Besides where you're gonna park, you know, you can't, you know.
Travel park.
So it might be, that might be tough.
It it's basically, it's it's very comparable to what we have at Misty Water.
Right.
Um, you know, and to to that point, I don't know that staff would suggest if in the future it was ever developed, that you would do anything more than kayaks, you know, a small pavilion to have a view of the water. Uh very, very, very limited use.
And I mean, personally, my preference would be to spend the money over at the cemetery to clear the shrubbery there so that you actually have a view, because we do have a lot of people that still go out to that cemetery. And that's a much wider footprint. And I, this is such a narrow footprint. I just don't know that it's worth the cost to the city.
Can we buy it as a road? Say again, if I wanna buy a road, can I buy it?
Uh, I don't know how you would.
Um I think we, I think we all decided it was three hundred thousand.
Oh, now the price went up.
What matter deficit?
First you're gonna give it to the people, but if I wanna buy it, you're gonna raise the price.
Deficit is three hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's much of a deficit.
Oh, yep, there we go.
I withdraw my uh offer.
I think that would be best. Councilmember Sutton uh commented about the cemetery. We, but the thing is, we have a similar situation uh with the cemetery, that roadway that goes on the west side of the cemetery, that is not our property. So it's generous landowner next to us that's for years, let us use that unless they've turned it over recently.
That's true. Don't know how it affects the fifty feet here, but yeah, you you're right, Councilman Coxwell, you, we don't own that road. That's Lee? No, Lee's on the other side. Anyway. Anybody else wanna talk about this? What do you wanna do with it? You wanna make a decision tonight or?
I just think it needs some thought for all the council. I mean, I don't know that a decision needs to be made tonight, but I'd like for everybody to kind of think about the future goals of this property.
Okay.
Well stated.
All right.
My other concern with this, as we all know, the ad valorem issues in Tallahassee. I'm not betting that this will be a good uh suggestion for revenue very quickly. They're gonna do away with it and then we were out nothing. So I wouldn't count on, we're gonna make a dime off of this.
But you get rid of it, if that's what you want. Okay, well, think about it. Item eleven point three is a proposed Mariestra Elementary School closure.
Uh yes, uh mayor and council, as you know, we had a special meeting on January sixth to discuss the uh closure of Mariestra Elementary School. On January twelfth, uh myself, the mayor, and a few individual council members also attended the school board workshop and school board meeting. Um at that meeting, the school board uh did vote to proceed with a formal public hearing on February twenty-third, followed by a vote on the closure of not just Mariestra Elementary, but also Longwood uh Elementary. And so we do have uh two representatives here tonight uh to answer any questions that you might have. We have uh board member Parker Dustin as well as Assistant Superintendent John Spolsky. And so with that, um uh you are certainly free to ask any questions you might have. And if there's anything else that the two gentlemen would like to share, they can as well.
All right, am I close enough? Hopefully. Uh honorable mayor, uh members of the board, uh my name is Parker Dustin. I'm the District Two representative for the uh school board here in Okaloosa County, uh Destin resident, but went through school from K through twelve here in uh Okaloosa County, attended school with uh with a lot of folks from Mariestra. And um I'm here to answer any possible questions that you guys have regarding sort of the methodology of uh the decision-making process at the board level. As much as I can give you of my own methodology, I can't speak on behalf of perhaps the exact thought processes of my other board members, but how we're in this sort of unprecedented situation. And then I also have um Mr. Spolsky here with me, who is our Assistant Superintendent to uh discuss it in general. And at this level, I I will tell you, I have uh watched your meeting on, I think it was the sixth. And had, you guys had a spirited discussion. Perhaps it might just be better, uh since some of you've already been to the meeting, some of you have already heard necessarily uh the reasons why we're considering closing Mariestra and Longwood, that I just opened the floor up for questions. Then of course, I know we have members of the public that I would love to hear from and uh and get their input and we'll go from there, if that's all right with you guys.
I would like to know your methodology. What what process, I mean?
Sure.
I'm interested.
Sure. I mean, right now in twenty twenty-five, excuse me, twenty twenty-six, we've never had such an unprecedented financial strain in traditional public education in the state of Florida as we've had in the last two budgetary cycles. Right now, we have forty-six out of sixty-seven counties, uh school districts in the state of Florida, so that's two-thirds of them that are in the process right now of closing and consolidating schools. There are tremendous amount of influences and stressors that are, that have acutely hit school district budgets over the last two years, but over a process of the last twenty years as alternative education options have become more available, uh better funded and um and utilized by the general public. That is, we have more students homeschooling than we've ever had. We've got more students choosing to go to charter schools than we've ever had. We have more students choosing to go um uh uh private schools than they than they ever had because there are vouchers out there that help parents make choices and incentivize them financially to leave what you and I always thought was just, everybody went to traditional public school and go choose an alternative. When you compound that with the fact that the demographics throughout the state and throughout the country are skewing older than they ever have, we have fewer children than, as a as a percentage of the population, uh than we've ever had as a proportion. So our population pyramid used to be a pyramid, now it's flipped. And the big bulk is uh near the top and those me, that means that we have fewer school-aged children to enroll at traditional public schools. And those double whammies have got us in a situation specifically in the southern end of our county in a situation where we don't have any other choice than to seriously look at consolidation, which is unfortunately, in the south end, we've got just from the base of the bridge, Brooks Bridge, all the way over to the county line, moving west, we've got four elementary schools on Highway ninety-eight within a half a, half a block, two blocks uh of the road. And that made a lot of sense when all of the homes were built in the fifty, sixties and seventies. And those were first-time home buyers. They were cheap, affordable for young parents with young kids to move in. And it made sense when the only game in town was the traditional public school system to have four schools with ultimately that are spread out less than two miles from each other in this corridor stretch. All of these things come together to put us into the terrible position of having to decide, what are we gonna do? I think that the district, I've only been on there for about twelve months, thirteen months. I will tell you that this is not a new thing that the district has been dealing with. They have been making cuts to their budget at every level, especially the administrative level uh for several years now. The last thing that anybody wants to do is close a school because it is such a shock to any community, especially a small one like this, that you do everything you can to avoid it. Um I don't want to beat around the bush. I don't wanna be in this position, having to vote for a school closure, let alone two of them. And especially, since you don't know me from Adam's cat, you can presume that I don't wanna close one that's in my district. But that is kind of where we're at. This is a triage decision from a financial standpoint. Acutely over the last uh two years, we had such a profound loss when they took the wealth cap off of the voucher program in the legislative session in twenty twenty-two. That's really when things started to get very, very rough. Next year's not looking much better. And I have one responsibility that falls under my role as a school board member. I have to pass a balanced budget. So that's a long way of saying the methodology is, I have to balance a budget. And the two lowest enrollment schools are Longwood and Mariestra. This is just the state of things. And why do we talk about enrollment? Just to give folks, school finances opaque. It's very, very confusing. And I will confess to you that I am still in a learning process, but I sat in a very similar chair to you guys. City of Destin, I was on their uh council for almost five years. And the finance side of it completely caught me off guard when I made the transition from the municipal side to the school district side. There are so many constraints on the actual money from a funding standpoint. Capital dollars, which you can use to build schools, replace HVACs, put turf on fields, that pot of money is not the same as the general pot of money with the, with uh operations. So you can't pay teachers with capital money, you can't pay bus drivers, uh you can't pay uh all of your people, which is eighty-eight percent of the budget. To touch back on enrollment, why it's so important, we talk about ad valorem taxes endlessly. But ad valorem tax collections for the schools in this county only covers approximately fifty percent of the operations budget to keep the lights on, the teachers paid, bus drivers paid, keep the uh the insurance paid up, all of that. Only half of it is covered by the ad valorem taxes. The other half comes from state and federal funds. And that is allocated to every school district per child. So if you don't have children at the desk, that means big substantial chunks of state money that we all rely on to make the schools operate is not here. It's just gone. And so we have to make very, very serious, substantial decisions to try to figure out how to balance. So I will think, I think maybe I sucked the oxygen out of the room, so I just talked at you for a good five to seven minutes. So I'll leave the floor open. I'll invite Mr. Spolsky, so we can tag team any questions that you might have.
Well, you know, I'm not done. Uh you're right, you, by my research, there are four elementary schools in Fort Walton Beach. There are two in Mariestra and an unincorporated Mariestra. You wanna take that to one. My question is, and I've done some research, like Elliott Point and Edwin's there, that has a chronic absentee rate. And there is also only twenty-six students between difference between Mariestra and a couple of those. So, and again, Hurlbert Field, only two roads on Hurlbert Field come this direction. So I'm assuming all the rest of them go to Florosa. Again, I was told that's happened twenty years ago. Well, okay, twenty years ago, I was still in the air force and we were living out there. And yes, we were coming to Mariestra. So my question is, school bus-wise, why can't you bring the Hurlbert Field people to Mariestra? That way it flow the traffic anymore. They're coming eastbound instead of westbound when everybody's trying to go. These are options that I'm not sure, I don't know if you guys looked at it this way. Also, again, if you pull up any dictionary version of a city or community, the second or third item is schools. I was in the military. We picked the base we wanted to go to a lot by what the schools were available. I mean, I, cause I could've went to Fort Bragg or Oregon or California, wherever. So again, I'm really concerned about, it seems like, and again, I understand money, we have the same problem. We have to have a balanced budget. Unfortunately, we can't write red checks unlike some of our friends in Tallahassee and Washington DC. Okay, same way too, I would offer to you, we go to Tallahassee multiple times. Matter of fact, next week, three or four of us are going over for legislative week. I've already been over there. I've met both senators. I deal with Okaloosa County and seventeen other counties in the Panhandle. So I visit all those representatives and stuff like that. And we're all, you're right, I pulled it up. All those schools that you were talking about, twenty and thirty of them are closing, are in central to south Florida, which have been mismanaged for a while down there. They've had some other issues and stuff. So what we have always been very conservative here. And I just really would like us, the school board, to really look at this. I mean, seriously, look at this. That's all I have right now.
Okay, I'd like to, Susan, Ms. Coxwell, you have a question? You got your hand up?
Yeah, not really a question per se, just kind of, I guess, in statements in the sense. With, didn't recently um Gates's uh bill get, I guess, passed for the reform?
That's Bill three eighteen or whatever?
Yes, I believe it passed the, uh it passed in the senate. I don't know if it has a sponsor in the house yet.
Okay. So I mean, that's one step forward. So that's, you know, one step, you know, closer to, you know, a better, if it keeps going that way. That's something to look forward to. Um also, do people that put their children on these vouchers and that put their children pulling for the homeschooling and such? and such like that, um, do they know? Are they informed that this pulls from their public school finances? That it, it, in the end, there is a detriment? I mean, not that some of them are really worried about that. But is it publicly known by a lot of people that it now puts heavier weight on the public school system? Um, also, oh my God, y'all, my things out once, my voice is not cooperating. Um, the, when was this discussed? I had a very serious, uh, and I talked to Parker on the phone. I had a very serious, um, issue with one of the board members comments, well, chairs comments about, you've been told this, we've been saying this. No one's ever said anything about Mariester. We've had meetings with our city staff and we were never given a heads up. So that is kind of not, um, looked upon well. I guess you say in the transparency level, um, so moving forward, you know, it's worrisome as to the property, because I know you're not going to hold on to it long because you're not going to want a system coming in and taking over it as a, as at an empty school. So I understand that. But really, if the gates thing goes forward, will that help the county? Is it publicized and well advertised to people taking these vouchers and the money that this does pull from the budget of a public school system? And, um, will there be more transparency?
I should have written some, I should have taken a better notes. Okay, so, uh, with regards to the senate bill, uh, my hope is that it does find a house sponsor. But I've been in politics long enough and messed around at the state level long enough to know that, um, not to get your hopes up, um, the house itself is very pro vouchers and may not, they may not find a sponsor. Um, we have a good advocate for traditional public education in our, uh, Senator Gates. But time will tell and there's only so much time. And if it doesn't get a house sponsor, it will die. And, um, I, uh, I just have some apprehensions that while it would be wonderful, we need some reforms. I think that politics in Tallahassee plays out that, uh, there may be too deep a concern to want to reform the system lest the system be dismantled. And so they'll just keep it broken, um, kind of, you, you can think of a million, a million different, uh, uh, examples that that has happened on why does the government keep doing, not fixing broken systems? Cause well, if it was to be completely gotten rid of, then certain folks would just be out. And so they don't dare broach the reform discussion because they don't want it to get away from them. You can think of that at, at the DC level all the time. Um, with regards to transparency, all I can tell you is I'm here tonight. I'll be here at every invited opportunity. If you guys want to see me, I am here and, uh, I can promise you open and transparent communication from this point forward. And Ms. Coxwell, help me recall the, the second point. I think I got the first and the third.
Um, it was just basically about, um, the bill and it was about, um, the public knowledge of people getting these funds or using these programs.
I don't think anybody generally understands it from, uh, it's certainly, the state government's not going to invite, um, probably scrutiny of the voucher system that they are promoting as, hey, listen, you know, we've, we are promoting vouchers, but we're not putting an equivalent amount of money back into the traditional public school system. What, they're not going to go and publicize that part. That's just how politics is. The, the pie gets sliced up differently. It just isn't going to be grown. So I don't think, uh, they've done any overt attempts at trying to get the public to understand that the voucher system does mean by virtue of how the legislature appropriates money, that if it's going to the voucher program, then it means it's not available in the traditional public sense, system, because the child's not enrolled there any longer. And it does have impacts. So no, I don't think, uh, and due to the complication of the topic. I mean, I'm, I'm only becoming somewhat of a, of a, a non-layperson on the subject just because of virtue of being elected to school board. It's deeply complicated. So at large, I don't think folks understand the impacts.
Did that answer your question, Ms. Coxwell? Do you have anything else?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so losing a school in a city is always detrimental for the school board, to the city, to our citizens that live here, to the kids that attended. This is never an easy choice. Now, I frankly am not shocked that this school has been slated for closure because in the eleven years that I've li- lived here, that school has pretty much looked the same. And there's not been a lot of vast improvement that the school board has spent money on that school. And so that kind of told me that y'all were kind of leaning to this probably ten years ago. Um, COVID has vastly changed how kids learn. Um, you know, now granted, the lack of communication with the school board in the city, I, yes, that can be approved upon. And I'm hoping that going forward, that communication stays, you know, very upfront. Also for the staff at that school, I, you know, I want to make sure that they are taken care of too, because th- those people live in our city as well. You know, their children go to our schools. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts to this, but at the same time, just as we are concerned about finances, I know the school board is too. And my only ask is that y'all really think about who you sell this property to? Because it needs to be beneficial to the school board, because I understand y'all have a shortfall too, but so do we. And it needs to make, it needs to be sold to someone that is going to be beneficial to our citizens. You know, the education system has changed drastically over twenty years. We're not, we're not learning the way we used to. We're not sending our kids to public schools for whatever reason. You know, some people are choosing to do different routes and I get that. Um, I, I may not love it because I grew up in a public education system. It's, um, I may not like of how things have gone and I definitely do not love the voucher program. I think we have some serious issues on a state level of how we are doing this because it is being detrimental to our school systems. But we have to work with what, what's in front of us. And right now this is what's in front of us. And so I need it to make sense for all parties involved, from a staff level at the school to the parents and the children, I need them to feel comfortable at the schools they're going to. You know, it's, and I understand consolidation. Um, but like I said, I'm, I'm hoping that going forward, the lines of communication stay very upfront. And we look at how everything, every next step that all of us take from a council to a school board, we all make the decisions that benefit each other and make the most sense for our citizens. Because honestly, they're the ones that are being strongly impacted. Because like I said, a lot of that staff lives in our city. They live in the unincorporated areas of Mariester. They live in these areas that are impacted. They may live in Shalimar. I mean, it's, so it's just working together. I do think it takes a village and our village needs to come together at this point to make some really strong and meaningful decisions that have strong impacts for all parties involved, not just one at this point. I mean, this is an emotional issue, which I get for a lot of us. But speaking from a finance standpoint, we're all in trouble. I mean, frankly, it's, we, our, our city needs commercial at this point. Because judging how property taxes may end up shaking up, we can no longer be just a bedroom community with a school. Because honestly, a school does not actually contribute any money to an actual city. Um, yes, it does provide benefits to our citizens that live here. But if we can't afford to keep the city going because we're in deficits, we can't keep operating deficits just as a school board cannot. Um, and we may all have to get creative. So that's my only ask of the school board is that y'all really do think about, like I said, the teachers that work there, the citizens, their students.
So Ms. Sutton, I can't tell you, um, exactly how this will all go, because we've only set the hearing. There will be more deliberation that occurs on the twenty third, um, with regards to whether or not it gets, if, if, if it gets moved forward, then, uh, foreclosure, then there's a discussion that has to occur at a public meeting about, about surplusing. Um, I will invite Mr. Spolsky to make a few comments about staff, um, to address that point about, about making sure that we're taking care of our employees.
Mayor Stein, good to see you. Council members, appreciate the time. Hey, we're Digs. And, uh, Ms. Coxwell, I know you're out there. I just want to say on behalf of, uh, Superintendent Chambers, a staff, myself, uh, and, and all the principals and teachers, that this is tough stuff. None of us, none of us want to be in this situation, uh, for Mariester and for Longwood Elementary School. Um, what, what Parker said is, uh, he got a ninety eight on that pop quiz. He missed one thing. Uh, Kenwood is also small right now, sir. We're watching that one as well, Kenwood Elementary.
At eighty-five percent capacity, Mariester's is eighty-two percent capacity.
Yes, sir. I, I, I want you to know, we're being very transparent and, and we're not, there's no secret agenda. We're trying to take care of families and we're trying to take care of the south end. The south end's experiencing about a twenty percent decline. Specifically Mariester and Longwood are right at the twenty-seven and thirty-two percent decline, uh, shifts. It's, it's, it's been really tough since COVID. Um, Councilman Sutton mentioned that. And, and there are different choices and there are different options. It's not like we go to school and we stay in the same pipeline and we all go to the same high school, uh, be true to your school, like the Beach Boys song. Uh, you know, that has changed a lot in the colleges. It's changed a lot in the high schools. And now it's changing a lot in the public school system across the state of Florida. As it pertains to the staff and the faculty, today, um, I showed up early and, and visited, uh, one school, one elementary school who would be in the proposed receiving end of this, of this methodology. Then this afternoon I visited another school. Um, and at Elliott Point this morning, uh, it was early at Wright. Last week, uh, before the three day Martin Luther King holiday, I visited, um, with Florosa. And we are communicating many things to those principals and to those staffs right now. Obviously still all being proposed for the February, uh, meeting. However, uh, it, it is important that we work with our operations side of the house to make sure we're taking care of all these kids within the families. Mariester Elementary School specifically has about seventeen percent military connected families. Florosa has forty-six percent military connected family. So we're watching that bandwidth. We're watching the logistics of that, as you mentioned, uh, Commissioner Odom, Councilman Oder. And so I, I want you to know, this wasn't taken lightly. And, and to Ms. Coxwell, um, if you were here, I would direct it, uh, to you, but I, I know you're out there online listening. We, this wasn't a situation where staff and the superintendent got together and held on to a, any information and then went ahead and dropped it. When we reached out to, uh, city manager, when we reached out to Mayor Stein, we, we had just made that decision. And, and a lot of it is like, um, Board Member Destin mentioned up here. It's these multifaceted things that are spinning as it pertains to declining enrollment. And declining enrollment all across the south is happening because of three things. Affordable housing. I can't move young families in here. And if I can't move young families in here, then I can't sustain the young school age child. The other piece is the senate bill thirteen piece that, um, Councilman Coxwell brought up. And that is the choice. I've been in this school district for thirty-two years, all in the south. Chalkdaw, Bruner and Fort Walton Beach High School. All thirty-two years. And I have seen how it has shifted with the other options that are out there right now. We are very fortunate, very fortunate that Senator Gates is trying to re-engineer that for us right now. Will we see fruits of that, of that bill down the road? We sure hope so. But we will still have a lot of folks that are choosing this voucher scholarship that is out there. When they get their test scores from us right now, there's messages printed on there from the state test scores that says you are eligible for these vouchers. That's a problem. We are communicating with our champions of education, with our school advisory councils, with our principals, with our digital and media pieces. We're postcarding the way an elected official would do right now. Basically saying, we are open for business and we believe, not just with our heart, but with our results, that if you take our young people, put them through our public school system in Okaloosa County, they will be positioned for success in either employment, an enlistment to go join the service or to continue their education. And sometimes it's a combination of all three of those, as we know in the real world. So we, we don't need to stop the communication pieces. We need to make sure that we're supporting it. That doesn't make the emotional side any easier for the teachers, for the principal, for the staff of Mariester, for the city of Mariester. When I look at your, um, your coat of arms there and the three words on there say is business, service and families. We, we support those things as well. The problem is, is we're not used to making business decisions in the, in the kid business. We just don't do that. And unfortunately, we just kick, can't kick this can further down the road, or we won't be able to balance the budget. And, and I know that can sound crass. It's not meant to, um, but we will take care of these teachers. If they are in good standing, we have been directed by the superintendent at both of these campuses. If they're in good standing with their evaluations, that they will not only have one job offer, but multiple job offers that meets their, meets their, um, their needs. Cause each family, each kitchen table has different needs based on how the dynamics look.
I, I would like to say one thing. I know y'all have taken a lot of slack, um, recently. I mean, obviously we've all had some, you know, issues come up because of the school closing. But I, I know that y'all have actually seen a, an increase in your graduation rate of three point three percent over the last year. And so I would like to commend you on that. And I hope that we continue to see that success. And that hopefully at one point, maybe we get to a point where we need to build another school in the city limits of Mariester. You know, it's, I, I, I'd love to get to that point, but yeah, we've got to have some changes happen in our city.
Thank, thank you for that note on the graduation rates. Our, our high school principals, our middle school principals and our guidance counselors work hard to, to make sure those kids are positioned for success. I will say this, an interesting model that's happening across the state is exactly what we're doing in the north end of the county right now, which is we're building a K eight school. And when you have a K eight school, you really have two schools with the overhead of one school. So that, so that's interesting, uh, that, that we may look at down the road in the next decade or half decade, the next five years of what we can do in the south to, to give our families, to give our teachers newer, uh, facilities and also be more efficient. Now, what I would say is, Mr. Destin pointed it out, in the fifty, sixties and seventies, when, when my house was built, right? All of us who live down here, the blocker or chalicey windows, right? Um, it's, it's one of those situations where location, location, location. It's awful nice to live down here in the south. It's beautiful down here in the south. It's pleasant. People are nice to each other in the south. All right? It's a good place. Unfortunately though, we're, we're not positioned to have as many young folks because we've been here for a few years. And so what, what we want to do is make sure that the students that are traveling through our, our, our pathways, number one, know what Ms. Coxwell said is we, we offer the best pathway. We, we really do. We have the, the stats and the data to back that up. Our board and our superintendent make sure of that. And we want to make sure we're taking care of people. That's, that's what we want to do. Um, so I, I appreciate your time, Mayor Stein. I appreciate your time and, and Mr. Destin and I will be here if there's any, any other questions.
One question we talked about, homeschool, homeschool, homeschool and the money, the scholarship and all that stuff. And the kids have got to take a same test as public schools, similar test. To get, you know, when they get to that point where they graduate or whatever, is it the same? Can they, can they, can parents that have the high school education educate their kid as well as a, uh, teacher that's got a bachelor, master's degree in education? I mean, I'm just curious, have you seen that it can be done?
And Mr. Spolsky, can you state your name and title for the record?
Sure. Uh, John Spolsky, Assistant Superintendent of Okaloosa County School District.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, I, I don't know what the long-term effects of that will be, Mayor Stein. I, I'm intrigued. I will tell you that we receive students that come back to us a lot. We haven't experienced the decline for vouchers as much in secondary schools. Where we're seeing it in the presentation we did at the, at the board workshop was the elementary schools. So elementary parents or younger children's parents seem to be exercising their right for that voucher across the state, across our county more, um, than, than the older ones. That might be because of after school activities, extracurriculars. Um, it's, it's pretty special if you get a chance to march, um, for Fort Walton Beach and the band or for Chalkdaw or for Crestview, or you play baseball at Niceville. Um, you, you take art from Ms. Moran, who's at the Teacher of the Year banquet tonight. Um, the, you know, that, that's pretty hard to replicate in a homeschool environment. Um, do I know if they will, uh, be as sharp in math? Or they'll be able to write sentences or paragraphs the same way as those public school children? I, I will tell you this, most of the kids that we received, uh, over the years, whether it was at Bruner or Chalkdaw or Fort Walton, in my experience, they, they usually were pretty smart, pretty, pretty academic in terms of the skills. But they, but there was other things that from public school, you, you learn, the soft side, the, the skills that we need to survive out here in the world as it pertains to tolerance and patience and leadership and character. And I'm not saying a parent can't do that. No one at our school district is saying that. It just, I think sometimes we're so used to, to doing things for young people that is saying that. It just, I think sometimes we're so used to to doing things for young people that we just do them organically, and don't even record them. So school choice is there. And Superintendent Gates, when he was here many, many years ago, said, you know how you combat school choice, is you put out the best possible product and programs you can for people. That's what you do. And that's really what we've been trying to do for for many decades. I'm not sure I answered your your question. But 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 I will tell you this, I'll come back and report if if any of the stats show that.
I brought that up. My daughter is admissions for UT in Texas, and she has a problem with homeschoolers. They apply to college, and they just don't, they sometimes don't, it's compared to a public school for SAT scores and stuff like that. There's a discrepancy there. And that's where that's where she sees that. I was just curious.
That's college admissions.
At college admissions. Exactly.
Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead. You haven't talked yet.
I just have one thing. You said you let students do the homeschooling. Am I close enough? You said let students do the homeschooling, the private schools, and you mentioned charter schools. Would a charter school coming in be an option to save our school?
I don't know. It wouldn't be operate, it wouldn't be, a charter school wouldn't be operated by the traditional public school system. In fact, it would compete with the public school system for the FTE funds that we're so desperate to have. So if a charter school came in, it might run for a while. But the same things that are sort of bedeviling, it's, the voucher program is a part of the the pressures that we're experiencing. Charter schools right now are experiencing declining enrollment in certain areas, not as severe as traditional public schools, but charter programs are experiencing it because kids are choosing online, or they've decided to withdraw. And really, the demographics behind the state of Florida, we are, we are the retirement community of the United States. And that brings a lot of benefits, but that also brings a reality that it makes the homes expensive for young families, and retirees don't have school-aged children. So if you were to put a charter school in, they could be very well turned around facing the same dynamic problems from a financing standpoint that we are talking about for Mariester right now, which is enrollment is too low to sustain the operating cost per year for that location with the amount of students. So you could have a charter school come in, but I don't know if you would, because if they're doing their analytics correctly, they would face many of the financial strains that we are similarly facing right here as the traditional public school system.
With Liza Jackson, another charter school.
Sure. There's a big portion of Mariester's families that choose to not enroll their children at Mariester and are sending them to Liza. Inadvertently, they are, those FTEs that would flow to Mariester, and therefore the school district, flow directly to Liza Jackson. So the school district itself doesn't receive those funds. So there's a portion of Liza Jackson that is Mariester's kids if Liza Jackson didn't exist, because there's zone, there are families that are zoned living here in Mariester that are choosing to send their kids to Liza right now. That's why charters have an influence on the finances of the traditional public school system, because our enrollment is slightly lower, because Liza Jackson exists and has somewhere around 600 or 700 kids, that if they didn't exist, would otherwise be probably enrolled in our traditional public elementary schools like Kenwood, and Wright, and Elliott Point, and Mariester.
Okay. Thank you. Good. Excuse me. Do you have a question?
No, I'm going to comment, sir. Okay. I'd like to piggyback on Councilman Susan, not Susan, but April Sutton, in regards to, when I graduated schools, June of 1971, and Mr. Blake, my science teacher, and Mr. O'Brien, my social studies teacher, teachers have a devil influence about children. But when schools evolved into financial institutions, we gave up something. We thought we were doing the right thing. But I'm not here to discuss the methodology behind schools. The point I want to piggyback on is that where Home Depot sits today was a school. Whatever decision-making process that went into that decision to sell that property and Home Depot came, their scores of employees, they pay property tax. That's a gift that keeps on giving. I'm not at all happier. There is no win-win with the school and what comes afterwards. There is no, not everyone goes home satisfied. I really hope that the school can give the employees and the families that are impacted by, because roughly 500 people or less are impacted by that decision. And I would hope they'd have more than one choice to what their future comes out. And I would hope the school district, when a year has gone by, if this should go out, that how, looking back, were those people really taken care of? Were they to celebrate their service? Because they're going to be at the tip of the spear. They're going to, in a sense, fall on their sword based upon a decision that they have no control over. But if the property does change hands, and something does come there, I would hope to the sacrifice of those teachers and staff, that we too would have a gift that keeps on giving, that the enterprise that goes there with such uncertainty and adverrum. We don't know what's going to happen, but I hope that the school board, as they take the bids and go through the process, if it should go there, because, you know, until the day the bell rings, we really don't know what's going to happen. So I do remain hopeful, but I hope that the decision of a commercial enterprise, that they would be such a person or entity that we could be the Destin Commons West, you know, shoot for the sky, because we need the revenue. We need, the decision, I want to have 500 people be impacted, but for commercial property taxes, we have 4,000 people to be impacted by that. So I'm not saying the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. I'm saying that if this decision goes the way most of us are thinking, two things I'm hoping, is that the teachers and the students are taking care of to the best of the ability that the school can do, and that the property, how it flips over, that all 4,000-plus residents of Mariester can benefit from the tax relief.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, I can make assurances that the first one, that is our absolute goal, which is to take care of the students and to take care of the faculty. With the second one, we will go through our legal process and follow follow the law. But you guys have an influence on how that that does ultimately end up with the orientation of that property, because you have rezoning decisions you've got to deliberate on, and that's a policy decision for you guys. And and but my heart is with the students and people of of Mariester, and I will do my best to make sure that something good does certainly come of of a tough situation.
Pretty good metaphor for the phoenix. Out of the ashes, something wonderful happens.
Sure.
You've been watching too many movies.
The only other thing I would like to bring up, Dylan, if you could pull that up, are you aware of the petition that's floating around, which has over 500-plus signatures on it?
Yes.
Okay. It's gone up since when I checked it on Sunday.
Sure.
So there's a lot of people, more than the students, are signing this. Last I knew, you were elected officials like we are. 500 people is quite a number. As long as you're aware of it, that's fine.
Councilmember Oder, I don't, I don't want to inflame any voters. I'm in the addition business, not the subtraction business, as an elected official. But there are times where you have to do the right thing, even though it may be unpopular for the long-term benefit. This ultimately will be okay for our students, our faculty, and the citizens of Mariester. But in the moment, I recognize that it is going to be deeply unpopular. And if I, if there was any other glimmer of hope for me to feasibly go in a different direction, I would go for it. And I and I reserve the right to 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 change my mind. But as it sits right now, we need $4 to $5 million of recurring revenue every single year to flow into Mariester, because we're missing somewhere around 200 and something students. That's the FTE funds that we need to keep it operating. As much as I want to not inflame voters, there is a time where I just have, I believe personally, I have to make a decision for the benefit of everybody. And if I can't balance the budget at Mariester to allow it to stay open, and allow that to risk the broader budget for the other institution and the other taxpayers throughout the entire county, I've got to have to make a difficult choice. But I do understand that that is a very large petition. Every single one of those students has two parents, probably grandparents. Many of them live here, and many of them may have voted for me, and many of them may change their mind. I do understand the risk.
You bring up a good point about enrollment and capacity. I'm looking at the chart here. We're at 82%. Maximum capacity is 538. There's 438. There's only 100 difference. So see, this is where I think if you look at moving, rerouting the Herbert Fields people, which is only two row, that was mentioned at the meeting that you all and I attended, I'm thinking, okay, they're there. Done. We, Herbert's perfect. And we're going to do in Herbert. Florosa, and by the way, there's over 12,000 people between here and the county line. So there's more than enough families being built out. 75% of Herbert Fields people live in Navarre. So yeah, they've got people, there's, I mean, I've been here since 81. Okay? We used to drive from here and didn't hit the first traffic light until you hit Gulf Breeze. That's changed just a little bit. So that's what I'm saying. There's more than one way to do this. I just worry you're not looking at all the options. That's all I have. I'm done. Thank you.
For Kevin.
Mayor Stein, I'm I'm here, and I know that there's some, if you guys wanted to speak, I know you didn't, you took a lot of time out of your night to be here. I'll stick around if you want to make comments or ask us questions. That's what we're here for.
Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Okay, moving on. 11.4 is the Cristobal Waterfront Park Project.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as we know, the county is working on the development plans for the Cristobal Waterfront Park. So you have in your packet the original concept that was discussed prior, where there was two separate docks. They are proposing combining those into one larger dock. There are a couple of reasons for it. One being that when they completed the Riparian surveys, there is questions to whether or not they could build basically where that jetty used to be a long time ago. And the other is is based on the cost. And so one of the things that they proposed to change was instead of building basically a seawall around the whole property, building more of a living shoreline. And so that is one thing that they have proposed in addition to the single dock. That is pretty much the only, those the, pretty much the only two significant changes. But if there's any feedback that you have, I will certainly take it and provide that to Okaloosa County.
Any feedback? One dock? Rocks instead of a seawall? It's going to be rocks, right? That's a, when you say that, that's when they put just rocks there?
So that's what they're looking at doing, yes.
It's a lot cheaper than fiberglass seawall. Anything? Ms. Coxwell, you got anything about the the park?
No, no.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Well, let's go to Council's committee standard reports and comments, starting out with Ms. Sutton. How was your cruise?
It was fabulous. Going on another one in 10 days.
Good for you.
I need a break. I would like to say I attended the Sheriff's Department with, I'm looking at you, and I can't think of your name, Carter.
Carter, Sheriff Carter.
Yes. Thank you for all that y'all do. You know, it's, y'all will have a break from me in a few days. So yes, but thank you for all that you do. And thank you for the teachers that have shown up and the Board of Education. I do appreciate y'all coming. I know we've got some hard times ahead of us, but I hope that going forward, we all keep the lines of communication open, and we make the best decisions for as many people as possible. So.
Okay.
Oh, and Liza Jackson has 977 students. Yeah.
Ms. Coxwell, you got any comments?
Just the same as Councilmember Sutton. Thank you to the school board members and Vice Superintendent that showed up. Thank you. Appreciate that. And anyone, I can't see who's there, but thank you. Also, there was something I was going to say in my brain. I'm sorry. I'm not feeling well. Now, I can't remember. Honestly, I can't remember. Give me a minute. But go ahead. Come back to me.
Okay, I will. Mr. Lawson, you want to say something? Okay. It was a busy week last week. Okaloosa Gas opened their thing up. We were there, cut the ribbon, the park, Colonel General Day, park on the Mariester proper, or was ribbon cutting there. So it was pretty active last week. Attended a lot of stuff. Other than that, nothing. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. Apologies to Pro Tim Oder. I'll give you better directions next time to get to the Sheriff's Office. I want to say thank you to all my colleagues that, the 9th of January of each year is Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And it was an honor and a privilege to serenade our senior law enforcement person of the county, Sheriff Aiden. And it was a pleasure to be there. And thank you for taking time out. And I do, once again, want to apologize. I have my hands full, so otherwise I would have went and found you. But there's much on the docket. I appreciate the school board and our superintendent, and all of the here, and to the families, and to those who possibly view this later. Sometimes you have the phrase about making tough calls and tough decisions, and that's what you paid for. But I just want to let you know that sometimes things may not go the way you'd want them to. But our hardest to do the right thing every time that we have this chance. So unlike a lot of political forums around the country, I think we're very blessed. We're very civil. We may differ on opinions now and then, but at the end of the day, we try to put the best foot forward for all of our citizens. So thank you for taking time. You you made a big statement by being here tonight. I don't know what you normally do on Tuesday nights, but it's probably not this. So we want to appreciate you for being here. And thanks for our mayor who represents us on so many occasions, doing so many things. And ma'am, I'm glad you made it back. He was concerned that he was going to have to bail, I mean, have to vouch you back into the country. But we're glad you made it back safe.
Mr. Oder?
Yes, the next Library Cooperative Governing Board meeting is January 27 in Niceville. The next one after that is March 24 in Niceville. Those are all at 2:00 PM. We have people going down to the legislative meetings next week, the 26th through the 28th, again, meeting with all the different representatives and senators and stuff like that. That's where, working together cooperatively wise, I've gone in there and talked about the Sheriff's Department, the public safety, the city clerks and stuff, everything that affects us. And again, what I've found, it's we're much stronger as a team, working together and helping even with the fire chief with some issues with the foam and stuff like that. So if we know about things, we go there quite often. A lot of times, I get to go separately because someone else picks up the tab. This doesn't cost the city a dime, other than my time. So that's why we don't always, but we we're very familiar and realize, the better relationships we have, the more we can get things done. Last but not least, also, I'm also going to be, I was invited down to the Florida Leagues of Mayors Regional Roundtable, February 11 through the 13th. So that's in Ocala. So that'll be interesting. That's all I got.
I'm gonna go back to Coxwell and then to you, okay? Ms. Coxwell, you don't have anything. Okay, you got it out.
Okay.
You remember what you're gonna say?
I do. Thank you. Sorry. And thanking the school board members that show up. I know that tonight was the Teacher of the Year Award for Okaloosa County, and that's where many of the other individuals are. And congratulations, I see, on my daughter's Choctaw feed to Coach Neely for winning that. But thank you again for attending this and missing something that's very important to the teachers, every teacher in the county.
Thank you. City clerk?
Check your mailbox. It is a new calendar year, so do your ethics training, do your cybersecurity training, and file your financial disclosure forms. And I will be making a follow-up email about all of those three things this week to tell you when it is, when it's due by, stuff like that.
Thank you. See you, Magger.
I'll be brief. So as it's been mentioned, we are headed to Legislative Action Days next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. We're looking forward to a very productive session. This will be probably one of the most challenging that we've experienced, at least in the five years that I've been here. But I do feel like we can certainly have an impact we have in the past, and we will as well this year. And so if any of you need me, please feel free to to send me a text, email. We will be in a number of sessions where our phones will have to be off. So just please keep that in mind. And with that, certainly when we get back, we will give you all a full report. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, we're adjourned.